Good evening, I'm calling the Monday, January 28th, 2019 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, first item on the agenda tonight is the approval of tonight's agenda. Do I have any requests for changes? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Agenda's approved. Moving on, approval of minutes from the last meeting, which was all the way back in December 10th, 2018. Do I have any requests for changes or edits to the minutes?
I have changes, Mr. Chairman. Generally speaking, Excel should be spelled more correctly throughout the whole document, which is X-C-E-L. Secondly, on, let's see here, page two, the third full paragraph towards the end, it says, "Villarreal asked how far away the Monopole would be from the 345 KB line." That should be KV, as in Victor, without a hyphen. Then the next line should say, "Rogers indicated the location of the 345 KV tower." So I would propose changing the minutes consistent with those two recommendations.
Okay, any other requests? Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended for December 10th.
I move to approve the minutes from December 10th, 2018, Planning Commission.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, minutes are passed. Okay, first public hearing this evening is Stable Path. Location 9560, Stable Path. This is a request for planned unit development concept review on 5.9 acres. Planned unit development district review with waivers on 5.9 acres. Zoning district change from rural to R1-9.5 on 5.9 acres. Preliminary plat of one lot into 17 lots and seven outlets on 5.9 acres. Will the proponent of the project please step forward and tell us about your project? Good evening. If you could state your name and spout for the record, though, before you start.
Good evening to all council member or planning members. I'm Steve Schweeters, owner of Wooddale Builders. And I'm here to talk a little bit about Stable Path. So, like you had mentioned, it's 5.9 acres. We're planning 17, what we call villa lots, they're 60-foot wide lots. Our planning for the customers that we're going to be marketing to will be empty nesters. Not necessarily an age group that's going to be targeted, but probably more than likely 50 and older. Visiting with staff before we even got involved in this project, we spent time with them as far as changing the zoning and stuff, and they were open to doing that type of thing because the city is in need of it. I have been in Eaton Prairie developing and doing things for the last, well, Wooddale's been around for 43 years. So I've done numerous developments in Eaton Prairie, a lot of empty nester projects and a lot of single-family developments. So I'm very familiar with the empty nester market. We're planning on, or we're thinking that we're going to be slab-on-grade. And the reason for that, we're going to be about 2100 square feet realistically. We're thinking slab-on-grade, and the reasons being, we have a flat piece of property over there, very flat. We could put foundations in, there's a possibility that people will put foundations in if they want them. We're trying to hit a price point of the mid-fives to probably 625, top market, somewhere in there. The slab-on grades, like I mentioned, it's going to be about 2100 square feet. They'll have two bedrooms on the first floor, a study, and we'll have options for four-season porches and covered screen porches and things like that. That's also not to say that people won't go up one floor or loft up above. You know, that's a possibility. We are a custom builder, so we'll do, you know, anything that will fit in with what we're planning on for the overall design or architecture. Few things, council members or planning have mentioned that they would like to see at least six units be side-load garages. So I brought an illustration along here. I don't know if we can zoom in on that, but this is a project we did in Bloomington. It's along the bluff. We did, there's probably 20, 30, one-level side-load garages, and we would prefer this type of architecture. But it's a cost point again, because it's side-load garages, garages are bigger, architecture's different. And I would propose that most people will probably go that way, but there's no guarantees of that. Even though the architecture that we're proposing here is showing a front-loaded garage, slab-on-grade. And it's probably looking close to the same, other than the side-load garages, going back to this one, offer more architecture to the front with the windows and then the garages to the side. So, and most of the product in Bloomington here all was one level. We did have walkouts there, so we had full basements. Square footages on the first floor were a little bit smaller, but we increased the square footage due to the fact that we had to get two bedrooms on one level. And that's not to say that if somebody added a basement, that they wouldn't go down in square footage on the first floor and add, you know, a bedroom or two bedrooms downstairs. So there's a possibility of that. We had neighborhood meetings with all of the people. We invited them from Cole Court, or Cole Court, yes. And anybody else in the neighborhood. So we had a meeting, first meeting we had at Fox Church. So we had a fair amount of people show up. And then we had several, three more meetings over at the homeowners' homes at Cole Court. All pretty much in agreement that they would like to vacate. How do you pronounce that street is? Thon?
Thon.
Yes. That stub road there. So we pretty much, with all people involved, vacating that road. We had extensive conversations about the outlots that back up to their property. We have a gas line that runs down the center of the backs of all of the north properties. So with that, we have a 40-foot setback from the center of the gas line to the north. So that leaves us about a 10-foot piece of property between us and the existing homeowners. And because the trees are so scarce along that property line, and with the amount of trees that we have to replace in this project, we had elected to plant a great majority of them in that outlot area. And those outlots, I was planning on turning them over to the Cole Court homeowners. So at some point in this process. Otherwise, I think that in general form, that's pretty much it. I'm open for questions.
Any initial questions from the commissioners? Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Far.
May I ask for further clarification on those outlots again? I think I heard you suggest that the outlots were required just because the gas line runs through your property. Why is it that the north of the easement for the gas line requires a separate property? Why can't it just be a continuation of the backyards of those lots?
Let me correct that. We are creating the outlots.
For what purpose?
For the purpose of turning them over to Cole Court property owners.
Okay, so you're giving people property and you're putting all of your trees on someone else's property?
Yes.
As opposed to planting trees off-site?
Well, first of all, we can't plant trees in the gas line easements. So when we're planting, and I think, you know, we have, how many trees? 400 and numerous amount of trees we have to replant. So to put them somewhere, obviously, it's going to have to be in that 10-foot area.
Sure.
Okay, so we're planning on doing it there. We're obviously going to have a lot of boulevard trees. And we have trees to the south side along the park, but there's quite a few trees that are remaining there already. So trying to work out where all these trees are going. And because our property, you know, we have a 40-foot from the gas line to the back of that property, it was suggested by some of the homeowners over there that lots are tight and things like that. So that 10-foot extra space beyond our easement doesn't really do Wooddale any good. So I thought it was something that would work out with the homeowners next door because of what we're doing with the product and planting more trees there, and that's the reason they're going there.
Thank you.
Commissioner, just next.
Mr. Schweeters, I have a couple of questions. The first one may be easier to deal with. There's a row of Scotts pine on the north end. Is that in the easement? Is that north of the gas line or south of the gas line? These are mature Scotts pine trees.
On the, okay, north, am I close here? North and east?
Yes. When you go to the stub road, they're immediately to the left of the stub road, bordering the south end of the properties on the easement.
Oh, to the stub road here?
Right.
Well, I don't, there are no trees, to my knowledge, that are on the stable path, new development. They're all on Cole Court property.
So the Scotts pine are already on private property?
Yes, yes.
Okay. My second question to you is, you mentioned that you'd be constructing slab-on-grade, but your target population for this collection of homes are empty nesters, which presumably includes older people, okay? My concern is, will there be a provision for a tornado shelter or some other refuge or relief that people could have in the case of a severe windstorm?
Well, that's a good question. And that question has come up, you know, in the past. Over off of Creek Knoll, years ago, we built some of the first slab-on grades. They were like 2,400 square feet. Typically, the comment would be is, you know, they're empty nester families. Typically, they all had tubs, and the safest place would be the tub. We didn't have any issues with marketing that type of product, but other than that, is there a storm shelter? No, there is not.
Other question? Commissioner Mitty?
Two questions. Okay, two questions. Is there any sort of condominium association or homeowners' association that maybe lawn care and whatnot is done together? Or is this strictly a single-family?
Yes, thank you, I failed to mention that. There will be a full homeowners' association, lawns maintained, driveway snow removal, and landscaping maintained, yes.
And then as far as, I saw the one rendering, I didn't see, and maybe I'm missing it, but I didn't see other renderings or examples in the packet. But is there an array of designs that potential homeowner picks from? How does it work? Because I guess one of my concerns would be all the houses looking the same. What is done to prevent that from happening?
We will have, we're in the midst at this stage of, we're designing the unit, the basic unit, and we're out for pricing right now. If you wanted to see where the, you know, where prices came in first before we designed all kinds of things and then try to, you know, send that out. So, but yes, there will be probably four different elevations, our typical scenario. Now, I did bring along some black and white drawings that show the side elevations. So we are going to do four-sided architecture, meaning if there's stone in the front, there's going to be some stone in the rear because of the four-season porches. And we're going to bring the hardy shakes, you know, from the front all the way around the backside. So you won't see, you know, just shakes in the front and then lap siding, which is typical in this type of product. So the products, as far as the shakes go, we definitely want a shake-type product because we want the cottagey look, that's what we're after. What type of final product we're going to use yet, we're not nailed down on that yet, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Villarreal.
So if I read this correctly, there's not been a scan of whether electricity is above ground or underground. Is that correct?
One more time, if there's.
Do you know where the electricity lines are going to be in the new development? Are they going to be undergrounded or above ground?
I'm still on it.
Underground.
What lines?
Electricity.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I got hearing aids, I'm too good, but, okay, yes, electricity, all underground, yes.
Okay, then are the electric panels going to be attached to the garage or behind the house?
To the garage, yes.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner, just next.
Mr. Schweeters, I had a question about mixed-use bike and pedestrian pathway. My review of that site showed standard sidewalks in certain sections, but will there be a provision to provide for bicyclists and pedestrians?
Well, we do have a sidewalk. I believe it's on the north, south side. Sidewalk? South side, yes. And that's going to, there is a sidewalk coming down Stable Path now, and we're going to interconnect. And Bob Mostert is here from Save the Burquist. I'm not familiar if there is a sidewalk continuing down.
It's a trail.
Trail.
It's a trail? Okay.
It's the trail out of the park, and there's a trail down Stable Path. It won't have sidewalks.
And there also is a trail that goes, I'm sorry, from Dell Road that goes back into the park as well. Goes somewhere, I'm not real familiar where it goes, but, and it's showing on this illustration right here. It goes back to the park somewhere.
Any other questions before we go to the planner's report? Thank you, we'll go to the city now, thanks.
Okay.
Julie, will you be doing the planner's report on this?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairmembers of the Commission, the applicant, as you stated, is requesting a rezoning, a PUD, and a preliminary plat on the project. There are 17 lots and I believe seven outlots, so we've already had some discussion on the fact that six of those outlots are being created with the intention of deeding them to the property owners on the north of Cole Court, rather than creating a remnant strip, if you will, for the new lots that will be facing Dell Drive and then bisected by a sizable gas line easement. As a part of the development proposal, there are several waivers that are being requested. Primarily, those waivers relate to front yard setbacks, largely as a result of the gas line easement that runs through those properties and then the shorter depth then that that creates for the lots on the south side of Cole Court, or excuse me, Dell Drive. In addition, there is a minimum lot width waiver that is requested for the lots, as well as a minimum lot size for those lots on the south side of Dell Drive. Staff is recommending approval of those waivers as a part of the overall development proposal. The tree replacement and landscaping requirements are being met by the development proposal. And as Mr. Schweeter mentioned, the trees are, some of them are being replaced in those outlots, others within the boulevard or the new lots to be created. There is the vacation of Thomford that currently stubs to the property as a result of the neighborhood meeting. The neighborhood did indicate a desire to see that street connection vacated rather than constructed through the property. So within your staff report, you'll see conditions of approval that include addressing utility connections as well as vacation of that street right-of-way in order to continue the access for this project through Dell Drive instead of that new street connection. The current property owner that faces onto Thomford currently has a driveway that accesses out onto that small section of Public Street currently. So prior to first reading at City Council, staff is requesting that the driveway be realigned in the new plans in order to show that driveway completely within their new property rather than skating over onto the neighboring property owner's property. So that is a condition that would need to be addressed prior to City Council first reading. And I'm open to answer any questions that you might have. As I said, staff is recommending approval subject to the conditions in your staff report.
Thank you, questions for Julie.
Julie, and perhaps, Mr. Rue, you could address this. What is the projected development for the south end of Dell Road as it traverses the bluff toward Flying Cloud Drive?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, are you talking about the portion of Dell Road that's gravelled?
Correct.
Now by the creek? That's in our CIP for, I believe, 2023, something like that. So that's a project that we begin, we have hired a consultant to look at some layout options and some very preliminary designs, but it's out there, away, it's probably five years away.
Commissioner Villarreal.
Julie, excuse my ignorance on this one. Is there any requirement that the developers to notify potential customers of the high-pressure gas line?
Mr. Chairmembers of the commission, not that I'm aware of, though that is certainly something that we could include in the development agreement. We do, as a city, include similar language with regard to Flying Cloud Airport, though the gas line easement will show on the individual survey. So anybody buying or purchasing a property is going to see this very sizable easement in their backyard. There will need to be some education as to what can and cannot occur in that area.
And is the, so there's nothing requiring the developer to provide educational materials then to potential buyers that there is a large, high-pressure gas line running through their backyard?
Mr. Chairmembers of the commission, to the best of my knowledge, there is not, but as I said, that's something we could build into the development agreement.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mitty.
As far as, sorry, as far as the process goes, just sort of relating to my questions about the architecture, how, what are the next steps? When we approve all of this, we're obviously not approving any architecture right now. Does that happen on an individual basis as each homeowner goes to submit a building permit? Or is there an individual approval that comes to us or the city council that doesn't go straight to just the building permit process?
Mr. Chairmembers of the commission, that would be addressed administratively through the building permit process. So that is why staff is recommending language be included in the development agreement that talks about the side-loaded garages. The plans you have in front of me, or in front of you, rather, do include at least six of those lots showing a side-loaded garage, so that condition is being recommended by staff and would be incorporated into the development agreement if you so see fit. And then we would be reviewing for that administratively as the building permits came through.
Is there any way we can also include something that relates to a variety of architectural styles or designs? Something, again, I'm just trying to avoid the complete cookie cutter. How do we go from, you know, not being totally identical? And, but how do you really define specifically when we say we want a variety? But could there be something where not more than six houses have the same design of any one design? And once six of the particular design are sold, they're not allowed to build another one that matches that?
Mr. Chairmembers of the commission, typically, that gets handled more through the homeowners' association documents so that the neighbors can monitor themselves. Historically, that's not been something the city's gotten heavily involved in, though I can think of at least one example where we did provide some loose language in the development agreement to encourage that there's not be much repetition along the same street frontage, at least until you turn the corner and saw some other differing homes. But largely, that is handled through homeowners' association documents, which we can ask for a copy to be provided to the city.
Okay, I guess I just think, as a city, that would be something that I, I wasn't aware of, sort of the background, but if we're having a 50-house development coming through and there's some sort of guidelines around architectural variety, I think would be helpful. And to me, it's important. But I feel, based on some of the pictures we saw, I mean, I feel fairly confident that this isn't going to all look the same, but I just wanted to ask that question. That's all I have.
Okay, anybody else? Chairman? Yeah, Commissioner Far.
Julie, it's certainly the same thing on my list, and I appreciate Commissioner Mitty bringing that topic up. I can't see how we can review just this project without some architectural standard language, color. He said four prototypes, I believe, and we've got 17 units. And in absence of seeing any formal materials for elevations and things like that, I think we need to recommend crafting our own language around that to protect ourselves from the cookie cutter approach, especially due to the densely spaced nature of this type of development.
Mr. Chairmembers of the commission, staff can certainly, if you agree, draft language that would be included as part of the development agreement in order to address that. The zoning ordinance does not provide architectural standards or building material requirements for single-family zoning districts in the same manner in which it does for office and commercial and industrial and multifamily projects. Excuse me. So that's why you don't usually see as much detail with these single-family projects as you do in those other types of projects. Take, for instance, Eden Gardens. When that project came before you, I think there were three sketches of potential facades that could be shared, or could be constructed, rather, as a part of that project that were shared with the commission. And of course, because the product is a custom build, individual homeowners are going to have different colors to choose from, different finishes to choose from. So if you so agree, we can certainly include language in the development agreement that would address that particular issue.
Okay, thank you. And we'll probably grill the applicant on the public record here before the night's over about that same topic also. Second question, regarding the front yard setback variance request. I pulled out my scale, and it looks like it's achievable to avoid this. The home lots outlined on their sheet, one of 10, do offer enough rear yard space behind it to push the houses back at least five feet. Even if we had to look at a rear yard setback variance as opposed to a front yard setback variance, I'd much rather do that. variance, I'd much rather do that. Was that evaluated at all? There seems to be plenty of room on the north, of course, because of the pipeline easement to the neighborhood of Cole Court neighbors, and of course, there's a park to the south. So, pushing the houses towards the back lot has no negative impact with anybody in their backyards.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, that is certainly something that the developer and staff took a look at through the very preliminary inquiries and process that, that we typically go through. As you might imagine, once these homes are built and are lived in by folks, most of the improvements that people look to make are in their backyard. So, that becomes prime real estate for fire pits and outdoor kitchens and swimming pools and decks and patios and things of that sort. So, in order to provide ample living space for those properties or potential future homeowners, the request was to provide for a smaller front yard setback in order to provide more opportunities in the backyard.
Thank you. Last on my list, Mr. Chairman, if you'd allow me to ask one more question about the trees. I believe that the loss of some heritage trees on the site are triggering a requirement of replacement that are larger than our usual three-inch. They get kicked up to four-inch, some of those trees. I forget how many were on the landscape plan, but, but there are some four-inch trees, replacements, some hackberries, I think they've chosen. And so, this ties into my question to the applicant before about them separating off the outlots to the north and then using that off-site land to plant the vast majority of their trees. So, they're ending up with tree replacement, not on their own development where the trees are most needed because of the density of the homes. And especially those four-inch tree replacements for the heritage trees that are not on his property whatsoever. So, it, it seems like a circular effect where they're asking for smaller lots because of a home prototype, and then they're throwing their hands up to say, well, we can't fit all the trees on between the houses. Well, duh. And now, they're looking for off-site solutions. So, it's, now it becomes our problem. So, has, has there been any precedent set for counting tree replacement quantities off-site instead of on the net developable site that the developers proposing?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, yes, this is not uncommon. A lot of times, it would be an outlot with a stormwater pond or something like that that a lot of the trees would be replaced on. We looked at this, and because it would help to provide a break or a screen between the two, the existing development to the north and the new houses to the south, that we thought this would be a good spot for them and a benefit to both the new, the new homeowners and the existing to kind of have that screen or a little bit more of a buffer between the two.
Sure. Do you normally carry a minimum number of deciduous or non-deciduous tree plantings on a single-family lot?
We do not have a minimum of a certain type, no. It's kind of what, what's in the area. We definitely look at that, and then what makes sense where they want to be planted.
Okay. So, as an example, one of the lots just has like one tree planted. That's okay?
Yeah. We don't have any, anything that says there has to be at least one tree or there has to be three trees planted per lot. It's, we look more at the long-term survivability of the tree, and we want to plant it in a spot where it's going to thrive.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, if I can tag on to that, the city will also receive a security for the landscaping requirements, and we will hold that for one year or two growing seasons, depending on the time of the installation. And even though those trees will be replaced in the outlots, it will be the developer's responsibility through that security or warranty period to ensure that they are surviving and thriving.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mitty.
One more thing, I guess, that kind of occurred to me. The existing home, I don't, I don't know when it was built, but I was looking at an area that almost looked like maybe there, this is like a small farmland right now. So, I guess my question is, was there anything here that triggered the heritage preservation board review or anything like that? And then, also, I guess, just making note, you know, is this one of the last small farms in Eden Prairie? I have a little bit of a nostalgia with that, but at the same time, you know, I guess I don't even know my own opinion on whether or not I think we should keep any, but I just thought I would note that.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, this, the existing home has not been identified as a historic property or a historic structure, so it does not rise to that level of review of needing to go through the Historic Preservation Commission.
Do you know if it's the last small farm in Eden Prairie?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, I think that would largely depend on one's definition of large, small farm in Eden Prairie. We do certainly have the Marshall Farm further south on Dell Road, and there are other properties as well, the Seaver Peterson property that is actively being farmed. Granted, there are not as many as there used to be, but there are other active farms. There's the Pika Farm as well. So, there's a handful out there.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, one follow-up question. Just regarding a plating question, is there any reason that on that southeast corner next to Lot Eight on the east side, the one we replat, we shouldn't clean that up and turn that over to private property instead of that triangulated right-of-way? There is a utility underground, I noticed, and maybe that's what's keeping us from doing it, but it seems like the right-of-way could be cleaned up there a little bit and add more property to that Lot Eight or something?
That, that triangular piece of right-of-way was when Dell Road was straight through there, and there are utilities that go through there, private and as well as public utilities. So, we thought it'd be best to retain it. The use of that property will still be available to Lot Eight, so.
Okay. So, the city will continue to maintain that area?
We would, we would still own it. The property owner adjacent would be maintaining it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, this is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to come up and speak in favor or against this project, please step up. Last call. Anyone who wants to come forward and speak to it? All right. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing for further discussion.
Can I make a couple more comments?
Yes, I was just going to close the public hearing part, then we can have a discussion.
I thought that was where we talked.
Mr. Chairman, before we close the public hearing, I'd like to just maybe ask a few more questions of the applicant then, in absence of any public comment.
Sure.
If you don't mind, thank you. Mr. Schwerter, thank you. You've heard our concerns about some trees and architecture and things like that. In absence of us being able to require, at this meeting anyway, architectural standards on variety of color and architecture and things like that, could you expound upon some of the things you started to mention already about your four prototypes and how typically you would sell these units off and offer choices and maybe ensure for your own good neighborhood standards yourself for high quality, how you would direct those choices to be made?
Well, like I had mentioned earlier, Wooddale's been around a long time, and I think this is like our twenty-sixth townhome development that we've done. And we are considered high-end custom, so, you know, what your concerns are is what's, you know, is what our concerns are. So, obviously, at this time, we probably, you know, like I had mentioned, four different fronts. We probably have five different colors, you know, varying throughout the project. Typically, stone is different on every building. The materials are going to be the same, but the colors are going to be different. When you're dealing with front-loaded garages and then you're dealing with side-loaded garages, right there, the architecture changes quite a bit. We do have front porches on all of the units, so columns will change the architecture a little bit there. So, there are some things that we're going to critique as much as we can to make their, sure that they're different. And we've, I'll bring more samples to council, you know, that shows us a little bit more because we'll have developed plans a little further along at that point and come up with color tones and product lines and things like that. But like I had mentioned, we're at the early stages. We've got the units designed. We send them out for pricing, like everything, they came in higher, but.
Sure. Okay. Well, I appreciate your thoughts about the front porch.
Yeah.
That's, that's very important. And of the pictures that you did show, I, I thought that showed good architectural style and appreciate your endeavors to just keep that in mind.
Yeah. And I would like to comment a little bit more on trees. Like the front setbacks, it's important for us to move these things forward. We're still going to have a lot of landscaping, architecture, that's a big thing in the architecture part, making things look different is the landscaping part of it. And so, we're going to do that to the fronts, and we're going to be pushing again, you know, the side-loaded garages because they're, architecturally, they look better, but then again, they cost more. But pulling them forward, it's also going to allow us to put some trees in the backyards, yeah, even though these backyards, they're tight because we don't have that extra space with that forty-foot easements. So, doing that and then putting the majority of the trees, you know, to the rear property line to the, to the north is going to be a big thing with the screening because those trees that are there are very thin. I mean, they're, they're significant to some degree, but they're very thin. I mean, meaning the branches are real high, there's no coverage. And to the, to the north, there's, there's a great deal of beautiful evergreens that will stay there, and it's pretty well full already. So, there's not a lot of places to put all these trees. We did mention to the city, somebody had mentioned this triangle here off a stable path. Because of the utility easements and stuff in there, we did ask the staff if we could plant numerous trees in there for screening and because, but we'll work with them with that through the utility parts and see where we can maybe put some trees there.
Okay. Well, just to put the tree conversation to bed, I mean, trees are important for shading as well on homes and in people's yards as well. So, we don't think they should just be pushed to the perimeters, despite the fact that there could be some screening benefits to that, just not as, as much as I see you are. Just to write down some numbers, trees number five, twenty-eight, seven, and twenty-eight, five, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight, just take a look at those after the meeting. They look salvageable, they're right on lot lines at the right grade elevations, and just maybe try and save those three as well. I appreciated that one heritage tree that you saved on Lot One, I believe it was, with that retaining wall. That was well done, thank you. What are your comments on the front yard setback variance discussion? Staff responded that someone cherishes backyards more than front yards, hence the desire to pull the house more forward towards the street. It, it looks to me like you can push them back and not ask for the variance. What are your thoughts?
Well, keeping in mind that the empty nester product, we're, we're showing you front-loaded, you know, garages, but realistically, we're, we're hoping that there's going to be a lot of three-car garages, and people want tandems, you know, so that's why we need that extra. Because we will be pushing those units back a little bit further and keeping them to the, to the front because they want the side-load garages, which will get bigger. That's a big selling feature, not necessarily always three-car, but the side-load with extra space in the garages. Everybody seems to have extra cars, few things like that. So, garages are a huge thing, and that's why we're leaving that extra space.
What did you depict on the architectural plans? Two-car garages or three-car garages? The layouts of the plans that you presented to us?
Well, right now.
Two of ten. Are those two-car or three-car?
They're two-car, front-loaded, is what we're showing you, but that's just the start of it. I mean, in most of our projects, we option numerous things, front-loaded, add two feet, add three feet, add four feet. Then, you go to side-loaded garages, which the architecture changes, you can add two feet, three feet, four feet, five feet, and have more space in the garage and be side-loaded.
Okay.
Or you can have that three-car garage situation.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Commissioner Mitty?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Commissioner Verlil.
First of all, I wanted to clarify that I misstated that it was a gas pipeline, it's an oil pipeline. I presume that LP is liquid petroleum that will be flowing through the backyards?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, okay. So, I'm wondering, to what extent have you, have you all had discussions with Magellan about the property and the potential? And do you have a disaster plan in, in mind in case of a leak or, or an explosion in that area? And how would, how would a person who bought a house there be aware of, aware of if Magellan is the one who has the disaster plan?
I would probably have Bob speak on that. He has communicated with them, but I don't know a lot about it.
Would you stage your name for the record, please?
Good evening, Bob Mulstead, State of Burke List. We have made an application to Magellan. There's a review fee and a review process that goes through their, their standard process, and we've turned that in, and we're waiting for response from them. But our impacts are very minimal. We got some grading along the very edges of that perimeter. They provided us with some documentation that we will attach with the certificates of surveys for those lots.
Is the, the pipeline clearly marked along the length of the plots or is it just sort of like from Stable Path to where Dell currently ends? And then, do you envision having the, the markers for where the pipeline is for people when you go, when you start to build it and the people who live there, do they, will they be able to see physical markers of where the pipeline is?
There, there is a marker out there, but I'm only, I'm only aware of one. So, I'll, I'll discuss that with Magellan because they have to be, they have to come out to the site meeting for the site grading, so I'll discuss that with them and see if there's a way that we can get it marked in maybe two spots along there. It's a pretty straight run through these eight or nine lots.
Okay. So, then, when, so other than, so if, if a person comes in and just wants to buy the lot, no, they'll get, hopefully not a big piece of paper like this, but they'll get something that says this backyard has a pipeline that runs through it?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yes. Commissioner?
Along that same line, sir, could I just ask, do you know how long that liquid, liquid pipeline has been in existence at that site?
Rod, do you have any?
I'm not sure how long it's been there. I'd say it's been there at least thirty-plus years, or maybe forty. It's, it's been there as long as I've been in Eden Prairie.
And from that site, does it go into areas that are not built with the neighborhood?
It goes through the corridor that it's, it's, it goes through many developments.
Oh, it does?
It goes, I think, all over, over to the airport. So, and it starts in Carver County, and it's a, it's a regional pipeline, so.
Thank you.
And I don't know if this helps, but the surveys is, is indicating a easement to Great Lakes Pipeline Company that started in nineteen fifty-four, so I'd imagine that's when it was established.
It's more than thirty years.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Chairman, make a motion to close the public hearing? We have a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion to close, and a second, Commissioner Higgins. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Further discussion?
I guess I just wanted to kind of give my last thoughts and comments on it. I, I didn't have any issue with, with the front yard setback or really any of the setback waivers because I'm actually sort of a proponent of having a little bit higher-density housing coming in. I know there's some, I don't know when this code was written with the current setbacks, but I think that as things are progressing, we're seeing these kind of a little, I wouldn't call this urban, but I think this could certainly be closer to more of an urban design than, than a traditional suburban, so I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of that. And I also do think that I would propose that we suggest that there's a condition added in the development agreement that addresses using a variety of architectural styles and maybe let the staff come up with the exact language on that. But I think overall, I'd much, I'm not trying to pick on this developer. I think I'd have this comment with any single-family home development. So, I don't know if there's a broader solution or when that could and how that could be a. single-family home development, so I don't know if there's a broader solution or when that could and how that could be enforced in general to have that sort of condition when we're talking about any single-family home developments, so that's just my thoughts.
So to clarify, are you talking about specifics or just a general direction to the city to?
To encourage.
I would, yeah, I would say I'm, I'm commenting, I, as a general comment to the city that if this is something I think we should look into next time we're updating code, or I don't even know if it would be a code thing or if it would be, you know, a design guideline thing or whatever it might be. And then I'm also suggesting when we get to moving for the approval to, to have this, to suggest the city come up with some language to ensure that there's a variety of architecture within this specific development agreement.
Commissioner Higgins?
Yes. Julie, I have a question adding on to what Carolyn said. As far as restrictive covenants with respect to solar panels, does the city code allow for individual homeowners to erect a photovoltaic array on their roof?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, city code certainly does allow for accessory structures or installation of solar panels, yes.
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Far. Yeah, just, just to summarize, I've been throwing a lot of darts tonight and I don't mean to be negative at all. I, I like the development very much so. And I appreciate you bringing this type of housing style to our city. It is very much needed. And we're just, a lot of times just challenging some of the, some of the norms and the way we the way we look at projects that are a little bit different. So I'm satisfied with the, the conversation, especially if we add a, a comment in our condition of our approval regarding some architectural variation. I think the, the developer has a good track record and, and has common goals in mind as we do, so that's good. The, the front yard, rear yard setback, I did want to bring that up for, for discussional purposes. I do believe that a forward-thinking home closer to the street is good for just talking to your neighbors, the closer you get to the street and especially having people walk by the sidewalk. We want to make sure that people know their neighbors and, and not have their house too deep back in their lot. But it was, I wanted to have that healthy discussion. That's all. I just wanted to express my opinion. So Commissioner Far, you're okay with the front yard setback? I'm, I'm okay with it. Yeah, yeah. Commissioner Higgins?
I had another question. Mr. Rue, regarding that triangular area by Stable Path and Dell. Would it be possible for those residents to have a community garden plot in that location, given the underground utilities?
I don't know. It hasn't been, that question hasn't been asked before, so.
My concern is that as we move ahead with new developments, that we create a sense of continuity among neighbors. And community gardens represent a locally sourced way of knitting together people.
Okay, we'll, we'll discuss that.
Commissioner Billerell?
So I will concur about the agreeing on the front yard setback. As the developer was talking, it occurred to me that what he's really asking for is that the customers have some level of choice on how they want to construct their property, their, their house on that property. And I think this preserves that option, that flexibility. And then I'll concur with two things that Commissioner Meddy had talked about, which is a concern around not having all the houses look the same, which sort of flies in the face of customer choice. So I don't, I'm not entirely certain how that can be best reflected. And then the other thing, again, not to take, not to say anything negative about the, this project itself, but I also share the concern of, are we losing too much open space throughout the city, even though we're looking for more housing and wanting to more, have more housing? I'm just uncertain how do we balance that with losing open space that's sitting out there that, you know, in this case is adjacent to a park. Again, isn't saying anything specific to this development, I'm just yes, saying something more general about the loss of, are we losing too much open space?
I'll just make one comment. I, I think on balance, this is a healthy way to go in this area. I do have some sympathy for the idea of being able to have more variety on the setback, but it's not a critical issue from my perspective in terms of the progress this project is making through the process, so, but I encourage you to keep looking at that as you do more perhaps. And with regard to open space. I, I still think the area around Dell has that feel of still having some open space there the way things were planned years back. So there's a variety of perspective throughout that neighborhood and right there at hand even with the new development, so I think. But we do have, we have, we have some future in mind that is probably a little less clear to us than what it was 20 years ago. Thank you.
Okay, I think the only thing I've really heard kind of lingering out there still is some language potentially around repetition of design. But I don't know, is that everybody's general opinion that they want some? Does anyone have some proposed language or Julie, you've said this has happened in the past maybe?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, staff can certainly research a previous development agreements in order to provide some language that had, maybe not become standard, but has been utilized when this concern has been expressed before. And staff can certainly draft that as a part of the development agreement when, when the project moves forward to that phase.
I'm comfortable with leaving it to the staff to draft the language and us just saying to add a condition to the staff report that they will draft language regarding architectural variety.
Any other comments or someone want to take a stab at it? I'll, I'll take a stab. Mr. Commissioner, or Mr. Chairman? Like a motion, make a motion to move to recommend approval of the planned unit development concept review on 5.9 acres. Planning unit development district review with waivers on 5.9 acres, zoning district change from rural to R1 9.5 on 5.9 acres. Preliminary plot of one lot into 17 lots and seven outlots on 5.9 acres, based on staff report dated January 24th, 2019. And plan stamped dated January 22nd, 2019, with the additional condition that planning commission recommends to staff to draft a architectural variation condition or language going forward about this and future developments.
Second.
All right, I have a motion for Commissioner Far and a second for Commissioner Meddy. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Congratulations on the project. Good luck moving forward. Thank you. Thank you for your time tonight and answering our questions. Next up on the agenda tonight is another public hearing for ground storage, water reservoir and pump station. Location northwest of Highway 212, southeast of Minnesota River Bluff, LRT Regional Trail and northeast of Eden Prairie Road. This is a request for a planned unit development concept review on 6.55 acres. Planned unit development district review with waivers on 6.55 acres. Zoning district change to public on 6.55 acres, a site plan review on 6.55 acres. Good evening. If you could state your name for the record and walk us through your request, please.
Certainly. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commission members. My name is Rick Wahlen, that's W-A-H-L-E-N. I'm the manager of utility operations for the city. And I'm really happy to be here because we've got a really cool project that we've been looking forward to for quite some time. With me tonight is Jason Benson. He's a water resources and water facility engineer with Advanced Engineering and Environmental Services. He's been working with us for a number of years. And hopefully we'll have the answers to any questions that you might have for us tonight, but I'd like to introduce this project. The ground storage reservoir that's before you tonight is something that we've been looking as a necessary item. Excuse me, I'm going to move this. A necessary item for our public infrastructure because our city is growing. We have somewhat of a limited capacity in what we can do with our water system. But what we're seeing is the ability to meet the criteria of resilience in our public works planning is really dependent on having some extra capacity with our water system in order to meet emergency contingencies. If we want to maintain the level of service that we've been doing for a lot of years, with a growing population and with a, a growing city. We need to be planning ahead and having the, the infrastructure to do that, and this is a very important aspect of that. And of course, the bottom bullet that you see on the screen there, fire protection. If any of our current water reservoirs become unavailable for any particular emergency need. We need some extra capacity to assure that, that same service for the future. So the planning timeline for this shows our construction, we hope to have completed in August of 2020. I mentioned that we've been planning this for a number of years. In 2015 and 2016, we began the process of doing a hydraulic model of our system. And through that evaluation of our, our system, we were able to locate about 15 different sites throughout the city that had some potential to host a water reservoir. Water reservoir is a, nothing more than like what, what we have out there already are water towers. But in this case, the one that we've designed for the future is a ground storage reservoir. It has a set of pumps that provide pressure to the system rather than raising the tank 120 feet in the air to get that same, that same condition. So we acquired the site in 2018. We're working on this, on the design right now, which is nearly complete. And we hope to go out for bid as early as March, provided that everything comes together here in the next month. The site selection process was based on a hydraulic performance. Which site has the ability to provide water in the best manner possible? Can we get the site? We looked at mostly city-owned properties just because of condemnation and other aspects. That would be a real hassle for a public project. And of course, in order for a water reservoir to function properly, it needs to be relatively close to large water, water mains in order for the water to get in and out of the reservoir relatively quickly. And of course, cost is always a factor. All of these things, looking throughout those sites throughout the city, we ultimately settled on a site that was owned by MinDOT. We believe we could get that fairly inexpensively, which ultimately we did. This aerial photo shows a triangle of land that's located immediately to the east of Eden Prairie Road and just north of US Highway 212 and bordered by the regional trail on the north, northeast, or northwest, rather. We offered MinDOT to purchase that entire property. When all was said and done, MinDOT chose to retain a portion of that property that contains the stormwater ponds that serve the highway system. So on this graphic, you see, let's see if this mouse works. The circle there is the ground storage reservoir and that property just to the north and east of the pond, going all the way up to the peak of the triangle now belongs to the city. Challenge that we had with that purchase arrangement was getting in and out of the site. The red outline that you see on the map there indicates some property that we're working with MinDOT currently to purchase. So incidentally, through some staff discussions, we learned that this site is actually very close to the historic Washburn, Washburn Depot site indicated on the map by the blue star. So that kind of led some interesting discussions that we had amongst ourselves. And after reaching out to the Historical Preservation Commission, we obtained this photo of the site. We verified the location. We got to thinking that maybe this is an opportunity to not only do a public works project, but maybe we could have some, some additional value that would be relevant to the community, especially based on its proximity to the regional trail. People use that a lot. And if we put a big public work structure right next to a, a bike trail that people use a lot. Maybe there's something that we could do with that to make it more appealing. This is an aerial view that our architect worked on with us. This is one of the preliminary designs showing a more of a rectangular parking apron in behind the building. But I wanted to show this to you because it represents a pretty good layout of how everything on the property seems to fit rather well within the limited space that we have. The ground storage reservoir is about 140 feet across. The pump station is indicated right in the middle of this drawing. And depending on the budget that we have, when all is said and done after bidding. It would be very nice to also construct a railroad grade and a water stop, a, a tank that was very common for steam locomotive refilling back in the day. This is a more up-to-date view. You'll notice that the parking apron changed a bit. This is to allow service trucks to be able to turn around, get in and out much easier than the earlier design. In the middle of that little teardrop shape in the middle is the backup generator that would power this, the facility in the event of a power failure. So a few details about the site that are relevant. Again, the tank is situated on this site to the east. It's embedded within the hill, so a good portion of this tank is invisible to the public. When we approached this site, we really wanted to preserve kind of the rural wilderness appeal that it has currently and not make this a big gaudy tank sticking out on a hill for everyone to see. Indicated here by the, by the terrain, you see the topography here is rather steep. That's a berm. To conceal even more of the property from the highway and from view from cars that are eastbound on US 212. We plan to construct a berm between the facility and the highway. And you'll notice elsewhere in the plan that there's a lot of trees planted in and around that berm to facilitate that screening process as well. There's a stormwater pond here. It's very essential that we have a place to capture the water that collects on this site. That's part of our stormwater plan, and it's a requirement for any project that's, that's done today to manage the water that, that comes off the site on the property itself. Based on the topography, that's the best place to put it in the limited amount of space that we have to work with. You also see a trail access here, entering the depot and then moving back out to the trail so that whether someone is eastbound or, or westbound on the trail, they can access the site just as, just as easily.
I'm sorry, can I ask you a question on the, oh, maybe it's the next slide, just?
Of course, the whole site is surrounded by a security fence. So here's an architectural view of the facility. We wanted to maintain somewhat of a semblance of the original railroad depot without being 100% like it. There are challenges with meeting current building code requirements in order to, you know, make it 100% historically representative. However, this pretty much achieves that mission. The building itself is about 20-foot wide and 80-foot long, very representative of a narrow depot. The pump station required much more space than that, so it's actually bigger beneath the ground underneath this, this, this upper building. Also, on the right-hand side, we have a platform which did not exist on the original depot. But that is a way that we can allow for the larger underground structure to have some practical use above as well. The slope of the overhead cover on the platform is actually slightly different than the roof itself, which kind of causes a little bit of architectural appeal to that, that feature. Also throughout the, the structure itself. The corbels and the trim around the, the windows are representative of what was used back at the time this depot, depot was constructed as well. And if you look closely at the design, there are some architectural features that were used back on that original facility that are preserved with this particular structure. This view shows approaching the passenger platform from another direction. Also a good view of the fence. You'll note that we have prairie grass rather than a maintained lawn, part of our sustainability mission. Also of note is the window on the east side of the building is designed such that it can be pulled out. That light panel that consists of three windows in this view can actually be removed. And then when you approach that with a truck, you can remove the big heavy equipment that's inside the pump station through a large opening in the wall. inside the pump station through a large opening in the wall. Provides dual purpose. There's a back view from the parking apron. The tank that you see in the background is actually, in this drawing, a little bit higher than it actually would be. The highest wall height closest to the building is approximately 21 feet. That's not very accurately represented in this drawing. This is a map of the Minneapolis and St. Louis Railroad system at the time that this depot was in use. Our plan was to consult with the Historical Preservation Commission and look to them over the year, year and a half it takes to construct this facility for appropriate signage to use on the, on the facility in and around for educational purposes and make it even better than what we might think of ourselves. You'll note that door next to the map is, is of the same period in design as well. This is a view from Highway 212 as rendered. You'll notice a little bit of a, of a tank visible here. This slope is actually steeper than represented, and more trees are likely to be planted than what we see in this drawing as well. And additionally, the existing trees shown by this photograph would remain. You can kind of see a little bit of, of the view of the tank here. It's fairly well obscured by the trees. So, with this project, we, we do have three waivers. One for the architectural materials and the appearance of the building. One, one for security for the fence heights. We're looking for a higher fence on the side facing the trail itself. And in the third waiver, that was for the color. We're trying to keep the, the building looking somewhat resembling the period in which it was, the original depot was used. So in order to do that, our standard of colors would need to be, be revised for this particular project. So, if you have any questions, we'd love to hear them.
Thank you, Commissioner DeSantis.
Several questions for you, sir. As you're probably aware, when MinDOT constructed US Highway 212 through that area, there were concerns among a number of citizens living in that general area about a shift in the groundwater. And stormwater ponds or collection ponds, or maybe even natural swamp areas, seemed to dry up. That was particularly true. I live in that neighborhood, full disclosure. And so, my first question is, when they did the hydrologic analysis of the installation of the groundwater reservoir, was there an analysis of any potential shift in the underground water table with respect to those ponds and the adjacent developments?
Well, I think Jason could provide some insight to that as well. But I can tell you that the groundwater reservoir is constructed at an elevation higher than the water table is in that particular area. If you look across the highway to the north, the lake itself is the water table level in that location. It rises ever so slightly higher to the level of the ponds, which we see on the north side of Highway 212. By, by standard, we can't construct any water storage facility that's any closer than six feet above the highest water table level that's been recorded. I can tell you that. Jason, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, that's correct. Really, the, the bottom of the tank is, is actually higher than the highway, so...
My second question had to do with, has to do with the interconnection between Mitchell Lake and Red Rock Lake. I understand that there is a, some type of underground channel that moves water from one of those lakes to the other. And I'm just wondering, given the proximity of your project, how that might impact that connection?
What I can tell you is that the site of the tank is an old spoil pile from the highway construction days, which you know more about than I do. I, I'm a newcomer to Eden Prairie. But the construction of this particular facility required that we do a number of geotechnical borings throughout the site in order to establish whether we had a sufficient foundation in which we could even do this project. All of it was kind of like a mess of soil, unconsolidated till, nothing very consistent, nor did we see any type of veins of water-bearing material other than some sand veins. One of our, actually, both of our stormwater basins are constructed such that the bottom of those stormwater basins will approach that sand vein in order to be able to collect the water that, that we gather on site and put it back into the ground itself. But I'm not aware that any of these sand veins have exhibited enough moisture to indicate that they're actively passing any kind of water between the two sites. Our geotechnical team, when they did the report, didn't indicate anything like that to us, so... Jason, did you have anything?
Yeah, the, the site itself, where the reservoir and pump station is, it's on about, it's about 30 feet of fill from the highway project, and so most of that area there is fill, you know, from the project.
Robert Ellis, Public Works Director. The, the chain of lakes, of which Mitchell Lake and Red Rock Lakes are connected by a series of pipes, ponds, and channels, our site comes nowhere near that chain connection of the lakes, so there will be no impact between the flow of water from Mitchell to Red Rock with our project.
So the interconnection between Mitchell and Red Rock actually will be south of that excavation site and underneath the bed, roadbed of US Highway 212?
That's correct. It'd be south and to the west, yes.
To the west, okay.
I have another comment on the design of the building. I used to be a member of the commission, the Heritage Preservation Commission, and did talk to some of their members today. They're very keenly interested in this and, and are very, you know, reassured that this is going to be able to move forward. And then the other thought that I had was the tank and the building setting are ones, I know you have been able, with Mr. Ellis's help, to get some of the photos and so forth. And there's one thing that you may want to look at going forward that is down in the museum in this, in this building for the, the Eden Prairie Historical Society, where I'm also active. There is a sign that says Eden Prairie that was on one of the other buildings, I think, maybe not this one, the original. And when you're looking to, you know, to look at what kind of sign to actually put on the building, you might want to take a look at the lettering that's on that old, older sign in case there's a way of kind of trying to represent that in some way that probably current fonts wouldn't necessarily get to, but that's just another thought. And then finally, I was encouraged to see that as an alternate, you have included the possibility of putting up an interpretive sign for that site, and we'd certainly want to help you with that if that is something that does go forward, and we'll try to encourage the council to look at that as well.
Certainly. Well, thank you. Yeah, I never would have thought that there would still be a sign existing, so...
Somebody found one. We're finding things all the time. Fortunately, some of them still are in a way that we can still get them up on the, in the museum.
Thank you.
Commissioner Villarreal?
I'm wondering if you can tell me a little about the generator? What is the fuel source and what's the duration?
Okay. There's two ways, three ways that we can do this, but primarily two. We can power the entire facility so that it could run 100% off of generator power. If we do that, we need a really huge generator in order to do that. And because the system will kind of float on the hydraulic profile of the city's distribution system, it doesn't necessarily need to have power for an indefinite period of time to be able to run all of our pumps full blast. So what we've decided to do is that in the interest of making the project more affordable and having enough power so that we can still operate the facility, but at a lesser, a lesser amount, we'll operate two pumps on a smaller generator. It'll be propane-powered, so we will bring the utility in from Eden Prairie Road. It'll be a natural gas, small pipeline, one of those two-inch yellow ones, and, and that will power the generator. I guess I don't exactly remember the kilowatts that it provides, but now that, the other way that I was telling you about, we obtain substantial discount from Excel Energy in order to have a peak shaving situation on all of our utilities. So this will be one of those. We will, we'll have a discounted electric rate by being able to switch over to generator power whenever Excel Energy needs to conserve energy and calls for its partners to curtail their, their power usage. So that's included in this plan.
Okay. I'll, I'll save everyone from, I'll save the commission substantial boring question that I'd ask after that. But what I would really love to see, and maybe it's not cost-effective, is to see solar in addition to the generator to be located there. Clearly, that would help with the efficiency of the systems. It would clearly save with your rate to Excel or the bill you pay to Excel instead. And since it's a new construction, I think with a good south-facing roof, I think it'd be really great, especially consistent with the sustainability practices of the city, to see that the roof outfitted with solar.
Okay.
So I don't know if you guys have already studied what the cost would be of putting solar on there or not, but I, I would encourage all to investigate putting solar as well on that roof.
We'll look at putting solar on the property.
Fair enough.
I believe it'd be practical for the dome roof of the tank to, to host the solar panels, but...
Well, I meant more on the, the pumping station construction as opposed to the rounded of the, of the, of the water tank. But on the new construction for the pump station, I think that would be great to put solar, and you know, you have the triangle at the end, and that would, could also be an opportunity to put more solar. But just having that site, considering you want it for resilience and sustainability, in the case of an outage, having some solar there in addition to the propane generator, I think would be an additional resilience investment that the city may want to consider.
Okay. Certainly. Thank you.
And in addition, it was indicated that LED lighting would be used for the perimeter and for security purposes, and I'm just wondering if that could be adapted for solar lighting instead?
Solar-powered LED lighting?
Solar-powered lights, how, whatever form that takes.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, we can certainly look at, into that.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Wallin, I think I like this project on many levels. It's, it's great, and I appreciate the historical romance of the, of the train theme, and especially the community engagement of that feature for community education for those of people who hasn't, haven't grown up in Eden Prairie or know the area. And just taking the water tower down from above grade to in-ground, I think, is, is huge as well. So, I love it. A few questions. The driveway, during your slide presentation, you noted there was one opportunity where the whole paved area was substantially smaller, and I look now at your current design and it's, it's like 120-foot diameter. And are you expecting large trucks to service this? Is that why you need all that pavement and maneuvering room, or can it be done with a little bit less like other water towers have?
Well, yes, because this is a pump station, it has very large electric motors, very large electric-powered pumps within the facility itself. So we're envisioning that the service vehicles that we have at our own water treatment plant that take care of that type of equipment are oftentimes big rig trailers. And we need to have enough space to at least get a double-axle well truck in and out of there. And that, that's kind of the minimum that we've been able to provide for with this teardrop kind of a design.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I happen to live close to the water tower at Hidden Ponds Park in the northwest quadrant of the city, and the city's doing a great job when they repaint a water tower to put our, you can see it on the banner behind you, our prairie grass stencil around our water tower. And thinking that if that's somewhat of a design motif we want to carry forward, even though this is loaded to ground at that pedestrian eye level, do you think maybe a painted stencil around the perimeter of that 140-foot diameter tank would be a easily affordable graphic gesture as opposed to just having, having the large tank painted off-white or whatever that was in the rendering?
Well, in our initial design expectations, we were thinking that because of the historical nature of the building that we're trying to create, that something as big and as monstrous as a four-million-gallon water tank didn't really fit the motif of a, of a railway station, especially one of the 1880s. And so we were trying to actually subdue the water tank so that it was a lesser feature of that entire facility.
Sure.
So therefore, our selection of colors are like earth tone and more like what would blend in during the wintertime when the leaves are off the trees, but also hide behind the trees when they're in full, full foliage. That was the intent and the reason we approached the design the way that we did. One thing I would like to also point out is that the design of the tank being within a hill has variable height of the wall depending on where you're standing and looking at it. At the highest point, we have 21 feet of wall space, but at the, at the shortest point, we have approximately eight feet of wall space, space to work with. So as the hill surrounds the tank, the, the earth actually gets higher on the tank wall on the far side than it does on the north side. I'm not saying that we, we couldn't look at doing the motif such as the water towers. We just hadn't looked at that as an option at this point.
Okay. We can think of other ideas where you can spend more, even more money, though, on that round shape. I was, I was envisioning maybe the old railroad roundhouse motif, or possibly one of the round barns of Minnesota, make it a large round barn, something like that, so. I know we have an unlimited budget, so just take that into consideration. No, I appreciate your answer.
Still trying to get this project even...
I, I know, I know, I know. And here we are. We all love the project, and we're adding on stuff for you, so we're doing our job, right? Picking up on Commissioner Villarreal's comment about the generator, since you are using it for peak shaving, and I didn't know that, then are you going to be putting an acoustical shroud over it so that in case it's running on those warm summer afternoons that the residents nearby aren't bothered?
An example of, of a similar generator, we have our well number three, which is on Baker Road just north of the funeral home. It has a similar shroud around it. It's, it's just a, the generator's about this big, and it's got a massive house around it to subdue the, the sound, so...
Okay, great. Last comment, and then I'll, I'll leave you alone. Looked at the tree inventory and tree replacement plan, and there is a, what I'll call a high-value black walnut grove of trees just north of your proposed storm pond. And it runs parallel to the regional trail, and it seems to be just at the spot-on correct elevation where you're not changing grades. And so I'm wondering if there would be a hardship in tweaking a few things like the stormwater pond location or, or something to save what could be a, a very high-value grove of trees, being those black walnuts. There's, it makes up over 10% of your tree loss.
Sure. I'll look at that much more closely. I know right where you're talking about. Jason and I were discussing that, and those trees are, are actually, oh, here we go. Right in this area of the, of the stormwater pond, right here where you see the green. Part of the challenge that we have is we don't own all of this property right up to the trail. That's right away, that's owned by Hennepin County Regional Rail Authority, and some of these trees are on their property as well. So, we're working with them in collaboration to get this project done and try to keep, keep enough trees so that the screening of their trail is likewise maintained, and if not maintained, replaced with more trees than we take out so that it actually goes back to the way it was. In our meetings that we have with them as well, they also pointed out to us that there's so many scrub trees, and Matt can tell you, it's, it's, it's pretty rough up in that area. And in fact, some of the larger trees that might appear on paper to be, we're saving, are so close together that the foliage has shaded them, one tree from another so much that it's, it's very sparse on anything below about 20 feet. And there above, the foliage isn't too bad, but down below, it's all dead. I can't say for sure about these walnut trees. I know there's one big one growing right next to an existing stormwater structure that will probably have to come out regardless, but we can certainly take a look at if there's any opportunity to save any of these. Usually, it's pretty challenging when you're trying to cut grade back and... Usually, it's pretty challenging when you're trying to cut grade back and form the sides of a pond without getting into a tree that's rooted there already. Ultimately, I did a project back in South Dakota where we tried to do that, and ultimately the tree died later, even though we did our best, but.
Sure, sure. And I can understand that for a tree or two, it just seemed like a very high-value grove of trees, something that I thought might be worth working around.
Sure.
And so something to take into consideration. If they have to get lost, perhaps there's another story to tell about what you can do with the lumber or something with that black walnut. It seems to have a story in an afterlife besides what you're doing with the, with the train station.
Certainly, we can use it in the train station and the romantic.
Well, right, exactly.
Jason, did you have something to add?
Well, I think, you know, one of the other, so if you kind of look at the trail spur, and we have this sort of angled trail spur on the trail, one of the things in our meeting with Three Rivers was they wanted, actually, a lot of site distance to the trail. So they actually did not want a lot of trees at the spur locations because they wanted site distance for safety, and so we kind of waffled back and forth about how we would do that. You know, and ultimately, they were like, they wanted, they prefer not having, you know, a lot of trees in the area because they want to have safety for.
Sure, sure, understandable.
Let's have a question. As I had coined it, the historical romance piece of it, I really liked that idea. I'm just wondering if you had any discussions about what that would add to the project budget as far as comparing it to just building a standard building?
The standard building design that the city would call for in this particular case, we believe would not be a whole lot different, primarily because we're talking about using cement-fiberboard siding to replicate the old wood siding of a depot. We're also talking about using a standing c-metal roof, which is not typical of a city structure. Also, the materials that we have chosen for the interior, the construction of the building itself are very, very basic, so that would remain the same. Probably the additional cost would be for the ornate fence that we felt would be appropriate for this particular site. And that light panel that you see in the drawing that shades the platform itself, I don't really have a good cost estimate for that either. But we don't believe the features that we have shown here to be excessively expensive with respect to what we would do otherwise.
Great, thank you. Should we go to the planners' report?
Mr. Chairmembers of the commission, I think Mr. Wollin did a very thorough job of presenting the project, so I'll just give a very brief overview. They are requesting that the property be zoned to public, and the 2040 ASPIRE plan does guide the property for public zoning as well. They are seeking a PUD. As Mr. Wollin mentioned, there are several waivers being requested, and also site plan approval. The PUD waivers that are requested are related to the building materials and the color, as Mr. Wollin mentioned. And the additional waiver that you'll not find in your staff report, but has been continuously discussed by all city staff, is the fencing height. Right now, city code allows fencing height up to seven feet, so city planning staff will continue to work with Mr. Wollin's staff to determine what is the ultimate fencing height that they'll be proposing, and that will be reflected in the report when it goes to city council. So staff is recommending approval of the project as presented in your report with the addition of the fencing height waiver.
Thank you. Any questions for the city?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner.
Sorry, on that fence point, actually, point, that's pointed by question, do we have in our ordinance about the height of the fence, the top surface having to avoid extraordinarily sharp barbs or not?
Mr. Chairmembers of the commission, the city code regulates fence height, but it does not regulate fence material.
I've seen in other ordinances where they go out of their way to say thou shalt not use pointy barbs, things like that, for public safety, even though it's supposed to be a deterrent to climb the fence. And just for my own interest.
Mr. Chairmembers of the commission, in some of the graphics that Mr. Wollin provided, you saw renderings of the decorative fence along the area that will be visible by the public. The remainder of the fence is proposed to be more basic, chain-linked type of material, and the decorative only reserved for that area that is closest up to the trail and visible by the public. And that particular style is very similar to fencing you'll see around the water tower at Town Center. If you go to visit that plaza that exists down at the base of that tower, it's very similar to this fencing material. And I think that's probably still to be determined yet through that process.
Thank you. Other questions? All right, this is a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak, come forward and speak for or against this project, please do so now. Seeing none, any other discussion or entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion for Commissioner Higgins and a second for Commissioner DeSantis. All those with favor closing public hearings, say aye. Aye. Public hearing is closed. Further discussion or motion? Commissioner Minney.
I just wanted to say that I really love this design. I mean, I was like really excited when I saw it. It struck a chord with me because I've been recently, I wanted to do a building at another development in another city with this train depot type thing. I spent all this time Googling train depots, and this is exactly the train depot I was like looking to find. I think it just, I think it just is a really good-looking building, and I like the idea of we're creating something more out of what could have just been, you know, a concrete utility thing in the back of house of the city, but now we're actually adding something to this trail. I'd be, you know, curious to go there and check it out, and you can kind of, you know, go off and walk through it, so I really like it, and I think the design was really good.
I agree, and I was excited that it was near budget neutral or close, so.
I had one question regarding signage. You had mentioned, Commissioner Higgins, about signs. What about a small tag or a small ground-level sign giving some people historical information about the site?
There is a view of the building with an interpretive panel on, similar to ones we have at other heritage locations in the city, that has been proposed for the site.
Okay.
Commissioner Vera. As Commissioner Farquhar pointed out, we have untold gobs of money, and there's so much I think we could do with this facility in addition to being a pump station, considering its location right along the trail, of having it be a place that people along the trail could stop and learn more about, not just about the area, but about what's going on inside the pump station, about the technologies that are being used, and, you know, tell a story about what's going on in Eden Prairie. So for future budgeting purposes for the city, I think there's not a great opportunity at this location, since it is right along the trail, to do a lot more education, outreach, and just understanding what's going on in the city along the trail, at the former depot and what's going on at the facility.
Commissioner Farquhar. I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move to recommend approval of the planned unit development concept review on 6.55 acres, planned unit development district review with waivers on 6.55 acres, zoning district change to public on 6.55 acres, site plan review on 6.55 acres based on staff report dated January 24, 2019, and plant stamp dated January 23, 2019. I have a motion to have a second.
I will second the motion.
Motion for Commissioner Farquhar, second of Commissioner DeSantis. All those with favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck with your project. Thank you.
Very, very well done.
Great. I have a question for you, Julie.
Yes, sir.
Do you have to print any more of these packets for this project? Because I can return mine.
No, we don't have to.
Okay, all right. Okay. Next up, planners' report.
Mr. Chairmembers of the commission, we'll send an email out to you as well, but you are also invited to the February 19 city council workshop. They'll be talking about the inclusionary housing policy. Jonathan Stanley, our Housing and Community Services Manager, has drafted an inclusionary housing policy based on the feedback that's been given through the ASPIRE process. So there'll be further conversation about that on that evening, but we will follow up with an email.
Great, thank you. Any members' reports this evening? Continuing business, new business, entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So move to close the meeting?
Commissioner Higgins has moved to close the meeting. Anyone with a second?
Second.
Commissioner Villarreal, second. All those with favor closing meetings, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting's closed. Thank you.